Let's call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, December 10, 2021. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Peltier?
Here.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews is absent tonight.
We have a quorum. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of November 22, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any changes? I do. For the last vote, can you add Commissioner Peltier and Commissioner Marhol as voting? They made the motions, but they weren't listed as those saying aye. Okay, next on our agenda, visitors, petitions, citizen requests, and communications. Assume you're here for the site plan reviews?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hearing none, we'll move on to the liaison report from the village board.
The last, so there was no update from December. So the last update for this particular, for PZC was for the December 2 meeting. It was a TOD update that was given by the, was it, what's his name? Tom?
E. Written Ox.
E. Written Ox, sorry. That's that update. But that was the last for the, for this particular PZC committee.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, the call to order PZ 21-04, special use and variations, to consider an application for a special use permit to allow parking lot as a primary use on 2710 South Harlem in the B1 commercial, B1C commercial zoning district, or in the alternative, a special use to allow parking in front of a building in the B1C district. Certain variations, including variations related to buffer yards, landscaping, and design, are also sought. Petitioner is 2720 LLC, Malad Noor Mahdi. Please call to roll.
Roll.
She has to roll.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Peltier?
Here.
Chairperson Mateo?
Here.
And Commissioner Matthews is absent tonight.
A public notice was published in the Landmark on December 1, 2021 will be entered into the record as, as an exhibit. Attorney Mars.
All right. Thank you. So as noted on the agenda, we're going to continue this public hearing to January 5, 2022 without sworn testimony. Tonight, there was a notice, issue with the mailed notice, and so notice for the January 5 date has been sent out on Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so we need to continue this while the noticing catches up with the, with the required statutory time periods. And so we would look tonight for a motion and a second to continue this particular public hearing to the January 5 date at 7:00 PM, or 7:30 PM.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. Thank you. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
With Commissioner Matthews being absent.
That motion passes?
So we are going to continue tonight in a little bit to talk about the site plan for this same property. And we're able to do that because there aren't the same, it's not a public hearing, it's a site plan review, which the Plan Commission has jurisdiction over without publication or mailed notice. And so just to get a jump on things, we are going to commence that site plan review tonight. And so while we won't be going through the special use and the variation standards because we're not having that public hearing, you don't have to ignore the fact while you're doing the site plan that there is a special use requested and that certain variations are, are being requested. But you're going to be focused on kind of the, the site plan aspects and, and those set of standards as opposed to the special use and variation standards.
Thank you. I'm going to take the agenda a little bit out of order, save our work plan for last since we do have visitors here. So let's move on to new business, a site plan review at 2848 Lawton Road, to consider a site plan proposal to add five or more parking spaces to an existing lot at a multifamily property in the B2 district. The applicant is Riverside Lawton LLC. Since none of us have done a site plan review as commissioners, I ask Attorney Mars just to give us, give us a little background on what to anticipate.
So, site plan reviews are required for certain, certain proposals within the B1 and B2, certain development proposals within your business districts. And they're also required for any multifamily and town, townhome uses in the R3 and R4 districts. And as stated in the code, the purpose is to ensure that the development or redevelopment occurs in a manner harmonious surrounding properties consistent with village policies, further enhances the value of the property, promotes the general welfare of the village, protects and enhances the village's national landmark district status. And just like when you're doing a variation or a special use or a text amendment, there's a set of standards that you look at, which are all pretty self-explanatory. But you're looking at things, you know, some of the same things that you would look at, frankly, with a special use compatibility of the development with, with adjacent property, the utilities, traffic ingress and egress, all those kinds of things, and, and just generally the overall design. And unlike variations and special uses and a lot of the other zoning approvals that you look at, where you are a recommending body, in, in, in the event of a site plan, you are the final decision maker. So you guys are going to give a thumbs up or thumbs down or work with this and conditions in, in a way that satisfies you. They do have the option to appeal a denial to the board, but otherwise, this, this is where this takes place.
Good. Thank you. Given that we have the thumbs up or thumbs down, do we have to meet each and every aspect of these standards as we do for variations, or is it more like special use where most of them should be met?
You're basing your decision on, on these additional criteria, so it's not, it's not like a variation or a special use where you're looking to find every one met. It's more like the text amendments or, or the zoning map amendments where you're kind of looking at this set and saying, are, you know, which, which of these apply most effectively and, and do we feel good about this overall based on these criteria?
Any questions for Attorney Mars before we turn this over to staff? Okay, thank you. Francisco, is it you?
Me, tonight. I'll, well, we're kind of swapping off. I was the first one, I think, that had spoken with the petitioner about this request. They had come to the village with interest in identifying alternative parking arrangements for areas around this particular property, 28 to 48 Lawton. At the time, we reviewed certain aspects, whether there was some type of shared parking agreement that could be identified, you know, leases to commuter lots overnight, you know, a variety of opportunities to try and identify alternative parking for residents in the building. We weren't able to find anything substantial or really that worked in this case in this point in time. There might be opportunities at a different point or with a different circumstance. But they came back to us with this interest in expanding the parking on the existing parking lot. So it would reconfigure the, the pavement area and expand that pavement area on their property. So essentially adding spaces to the site itself rather than identifying alternative spaces in the downtown area. This is a B2 zoning, so they're held to slightly different requirements. There's not a, there's a code provision that says that there's not a minimum amount of parking that's required of them. Ideally, they would provide enough spaces that residents of the building could feel comfortable if they have or own one or more vehicles that they could park reasonably close to where they live. But there's not a set requirement for a certain number. So even if they say, well, standard, you know, code might require one space per every unit, or wait, sorry, one and a half for the first six units and then one after, every unit after, doesn't necessarily apply here. So to require 40-plus spaces of, of a building this large is not, can't be accomplished on that particular property. So they're trying to expand as much as they can using the space available. We did identify as of today, a case that had been planned for approval through a variance process about seven years ago. It was withdrawn by the, the building's current owner as a petitioner. It's very similar, if not the same, as, as the proposal you see before you tonight. Had I found it earlier than today, we would have included that information in the packet for you. It can answer some questions. I have the file with me. But to that, that all said, what they're proposing is to reconfigure the lot, kind of streamline, pull all the parking south towards the, the face of the building in the rear of the lot. The, I'm trying to think of what I was trying to say. And, and so what they have currently is a configuration where the single line of parking exits out the bank drive-through in the parking lot. And so what they'd be doing with this revised plan is pulling that parking south. They would be 90-degree parking, 90 degrees for parking spaces and host all of them south of that, of the current barricade you see in different pictures. It's like a, you know, traffic barricade, but separating the bank property from the Lawton property. They have indicated, although it's not indicated on the site plan, that the landscaping islands required by the code section, sorry, 10, 9, 6, would require a landscaping island for every five parking spaces. They have indicated that they, a willingness to insert those into the site plan. It may be, you know, of the commission's interest to identify where those would be. Otherwise, if, if the condition would be that, that they're required to insert those, it may be beneficial to have an architect identify exactly which island, which spaces those should go into from a visibility or, or traffic circulation perspective. So that's also of note. I don't believe they are required an ADA space, but that would be, they would at minimum be required one, if they're required one at all. And again, an architect would identify where, where that placement should be. That could indicate a loss of, of spaces. The parking stalls also on this plan are identified as eight feet. And if they are to meet the code requirements without a variance, which they must do or have a condition, would need to be nine feet. So that, that's my kind of overview. We have a petitioner here that should, should make testimony and allow for any questions to be answered. But anything for staff, I can, I can attempt to answer for you.
Commissioner Marhol?
It looks like there was some previous construction or thought to do something out there because the wall that's identified in the various documents has been gone for at least a year.
I'm not certain.
It's been gone a while?
Yeah.
If you don't want to quote me on the year, that's fine, but it's been gone a lot more than just a couple months. There's a stone wall that's identified in all the documents.
Yes.
So it looks like they were already kind of preparing down this, or planning to go down this path of installing extra parking.
Well, when would you like that to happen with?
Are there more questions right now for staff that we want to cover?
Did you say, Ashley?
Yes.
That right now, the plan shows eight-foot-long spots and they have to increase them to nine? I couldn't quite hear what you said.
Yes. So the width of the spaces must be nine feet per code. So we need to account for that in any adjustment to the site plan. And then, yes, they'd be 18 feet in length as the minimum and nine feet in width.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ashley, sorry, the nine feet is unless we gave them a variance to go to eight.
Correct. So they, they could apply for a variation to any component of the plan prior to construction if that's what, what they would choose. But this is what's been presented as of today.
Thank you.
Please, would you go to the podium and introduce yourself? What's your name?
Alan Meltzer.
Thank you. We have questions for Mr. Meltzer.
Just the, just the one, well, start with the one about the wall.
So they took down the wall because it was falling down. It was kind of two separate things. It, I mean, it certainly makes the building of a, expanding a parking lot easier, but it was unrelated.
Okay.
I think, I think there might've been like a car that hit it and it was in disrepair anyways, so.
Other questions?
I have a question. Are you the contract purchaser?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm, I'm looking, I actually drove, drove by the property, so I also know that the wall is down. And what you're proposing is, it's, it's a lot of non-landscaping space. Have you thought about snow removal? You know, what do you, you know, when and if we do get a snowstorm? What do you, what are your plans if you've got all spaces? Where are you going to push the snow?
That's a good question. And we had discussed leaving five landscaping islands, which could be good locations to push the snow. And if, if that wasn't feasible, we could, you know, potentially haul it away. So.
And then also I noticed that there was utility poles right down the center of what I think is going to be your, your drive, your pass-throughs. What are your thoughts with regard to your, your plans on the utility poles and, and how those are going to be? Are they going to remain? Are the cars going to drive?
They're going to remain. Yeah. Ashley had mentioned previous plans seven years ago, and I think in their plan, they had an idea to move the poles, which, which is a pretty complicated thing to accomplish. This one, it actually leaves the poles where they are and, and builds the spaces around them.
So where, where would the, would the utility pole that it, is it smack dab in the middle of your 24 feet that you're allowing for egress and ingress?
If you see, it's, it's kind of on the plan in between 24 and 25. That's where the pole is. So.
Oh, so, oh, okay. All right.
See it there? Yeah.
And then the, I'm, I'm not that familiar with the apartment building. Are there garden units?
There are two units at grade that have a, have like a loft upstairs, but that's it.
So these, the parking spots that are going to be added, sort of in the indentation in the back of the building?
Right.
Though, they would be facing residences? Would those be, are those basement windows for the building or?
Those are, those are facing like storage rooms. The, the two units that are gardens are closest to the bank. So they're, you know, there's not, there's not spaces next to them. It's like the far, you know, as close as you can get to First American Bank, so.
And, and then, if, if I may, I'm sorry if I'm monopolizing, but I, I did notice on the original Platte survey that, and I don't necessarily expect you to know the answer because you don't own the property as of yet, but there is a 30-foot easement for ingress and egress. It appears that it's smack, it's right in the area that you're, that is your parking spot, your parking lot. Any thoughts of, who are the parties to this easement?
So there's, the current parking lot, as Ashley mentioned, you, you exit into the bank's drive-through. So that, I think there's one easement there with First American Bank so that the tenants can exit through that drive-through. So that, that really doesn't change. That's still going to be the case. And then I think there's also the, you know, the utility easement for the.
I wonder if we're talking about two different utility poles. I think Commissioner Brown was talking about the one that's right at the entrance to the alley.
Mm-hmm.
And on the plan, it shows it being the first parking spot and where the dumpsters will now go, but, not an architect, but it just doesn't seem like that's going to work.
Um.
I mean, I agree that it seems like, from being there and looking at the pictures, looking at the plan, that that utility pole is going to be in the driving lane.
The, the first one, closest to the, to the garden.
To the alley.
Uh. So they would be, they'd be entering, I guess, to the side of that, entering the parking lot.
So there's a potential for cars to hit the pole if they're going too fast or if they slide on ice or something?
I suppose, I, I guess I, looking at the plan, I, I think there's sufficient space, but I suppose that's a, you know, that's a possibility.
Fair enough question. Commissioner Marhol?
I think there's actually more danger for people to run into that pole for the ones who are using the alley between the house on Lawton and the petitioner's building rather than the, the parking lot itself. With the way this plan is drawn, the utility pole would be next to the caged dumpster area, which I think would probably protect it sufficiently from the people who use the parking lot itself. So it's just, it's a, it's an existing condition that I don't think is getting any worse in this proposal.
No.
Now, one thing that the petitioner should note is the 2014 plan shows one pole. And if you look at the Google Earth image, and I can't tell you what page it's on, but there's a, a street view right before the memo from Community Development about the 22, 2720 property, but there's now two poles out there, and that may be more of an issue that you're going to have to figure out.
Yeah, it looks like there are two poles there.
Now, you can see, you can see it in the image.
Yeah, I was just looking at that photo yesterday. But they do seem to be on the edge of the property. It's not clear to me they're even on the property. I mean, I can't tell. Probably a survey, you'd have to have a surveyor.
Well, according to the flat, it looks like it's on the Riverside side of the property line.
I, I don't think it's.
I had a separate question regarding the diagram showing it is a two-way lane, a lane going both ways. And I'm just wondering if that's necessary or why it's drawn that way? Why couldn't it just be a one-way lane?
That's a good point. You know, given that they're exiting out the bank's drive-through, it could be just one way.
Then you could have the extra foot or the extra length or whatever you need. So I'm just, just to, it's up to you. It's your, your plan, but.
I think my favorite question is, this commission has spoken a lot about impervious area and stormwater, and so have you given any thought to mitigating impervious areas? Because you're going to be building another, oh, 2,700 square feet of asphalt.
So we have talked a bit about that. And we had discussed, you know, leaving the five landscaping islands, which would help. We would discuss putting in some permeable brick. We had actually looked at a survey that had shown that area as previously being asphalt since we're not the current owner. I don't know the dates, but at some point, I think the area that we're paving was, was asphalt. No, it's not anymore. But those are the things that we had, we had talked about, the, the landscaping islands and the, you know, potential to put some permeable brick and.
I can add, just in a related comment, about MWRD requirements. I did confer with the engineer about whether this property would be subject to the requirements of MWRD's stormwater management, and it would not fall into that because of the, the size of this particular property and that its residential also would, would not put it in that threshold.
And Attorney Mars found a provision that said if you're, they're voluntarily adding parking spaces, it does not result in the property exceeding the maximum impervious surface requirements. So unlike a residential property, am I saying this right?
Right. So at some point in the past, it looks like a policy decision was made to encourage the provision of additional parking by providing that exception.
But to Commissioner Marhol's point, if there are some voluntary areas that could be drainable, we would encourage that. So I see a little bit of landscaping near where the dumpsters currently are. And then at the west end, right before exiting into the bank parking lot, is that correct?
Well, the aerial photo that does not have the colored shape on it does show that when there was a wall there, it was grass. So I'm not quite sure about the, all the iterations between this survey that was from 2008 and then this more recent photo and then the wall. To, could you repeat the provision, the language of the provision, Attorney Mars?
Sure. It, it provides that the voluntary establishment of additional parking facilities shall not result in the property exceeding the maximum impervious surface requirements where applicable of this zoning ordinance.
So does that essentially mean that when the future owner pays to provide additional parking, that that is simply just not considered an addition of, of impervious area? And so whatever they have out there now?
Correct. And, and does it, B2 have impervious surface?
No.
No.
Right. So B2 doesn't have impervious surface coverage maximums anyways?
So ultimately, it wouldn't matter.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification.
Other questions?
Just a couple. How many parking spaces are out there now?
16.
16. And how many units?
30.
And you're proposing adding 14 additional spaces?
Uh, six.
Oh, only six additional spaces.
And once it's landscaped, really, it'll only be four additional.
The six, I kind of count the landscaping islands, so.
Right. So on your plan, it's more, but once you add the islands, it would be down to six?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
On the plan, it's how many as proposed?
27.
So, yeah, so it was, the plan was to go up 11 and then came down to six.
Can you describe the lighting and how you'll make sure that it doesn't bother any of the residents or neighbors?
Uh, sure. So there's three LED lights that would be installed there. It's, it's, they're, they're located in such a way that it wouldn't be shining into any of the residence units. And this, uh, you know, the lights are facing the bank parking lot. So I think, I think it would be, um, it wouldn't disturb anybody.
So they're not going to be shielded so the light only comes down?
They could be. We haven't picked out, you know, fixtures, but that's certainly something that we could do.
Is there ever occasion for the bank patrons to ever use the current parking lot to get to the, um, to get to the drive-through? Or is there, they use, they use the pathway to the north? Is that direct?
Yeah, they have their own drive-through lane.
Okay. So they never really have to use your parking?
No. We, right. We, we exit through their drive-through, but they don't come through ours.
And the exiting process has already been previously discussed with them and they're still good with it?
Yeah. It, it's the, the same way that it's been for many years.
Commissioners, what are your thoughts on eight-foot wide versus the required nine-foot wide spaces?
I would prefer the eight-foot wide. Nine-foot is based on high-use spaces. And typically with a residential location, you don't see people coming in and out a lot. So the dangers of door dings and everything else is generally reduced. And honestly, it helps reduce the amount of pavement and possibly gives the petitioner an extra space. Generally, I think our standard, uh, the parking widths that we're demanding for low-use locations are a little too high anyway.
I don't think it's going to reduce the asphalt. Other thoughts on eight versus nine, please?
That would require a variation, correct?
Okay.
I don't have any strong feeling. Eight-foot is adequate, that's fine with me, based on use, as Commissioner Marhol says.
I would agree that with this type of lot, there's less in and out. Generally, a somewhat narrower spots are manageable.
Discussion? Jill?
Generally, sorry, go on, Commissioner.
Oh, um. I'm not really comfortable considering this plan that's laid out before us, knowing that it's going to change so much. You know, we've said that they need to change the width of the parking stalls. They need to add landscape islands. And they'll need to add an accessible parking space. All of those changes are going to result in a lot that looks quite different from the 27 spaces that are proposed before us. You know, I hate to drag out the process, but knowing that what gets built would be very different from what we have seen to approve, I'm, I'm just not very comfortable with that.
So are we inclined to recommend landscape islands?
I was wondering if we could give some parameters that we could agree on, that we would expect to see included in the plan and that would probably aid speedier work on our part in the future. Such things would include ADA provisions, landscape islands, possibly one-way in and out. But those are just my thoughts and other people should weigh in.
Commissioner Braun, any thoughts?
I would be curious to know more about that 30-foot easement for ingress and egress and whether or not the, the, the bank has anything to do with that. And, um, I, I, I would be curious to see that document.
Is that something we can request?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't hear anybody saying they want to vote on this tonight. I would be in agreement that I would like to see a final plan that accurately reflects what will happen. I mean, right now, you said there are 16 spaces. What we have says there's 13 existing. So I think if we have everything finalized and accurate, we would be more comfortable moving forward.
I think, just have a question for you then. You know, I'm not sure, maybe the petitioner can also give a general timeframe. I know you're under purchase agreement. At what point would the commission be willing to revisit this? If, if need be, it would, if it would require a variation? Attorney Mars, do we have time to notice that prior to?
Not, not for the special meeting on the 5th, but certainly for the January regular meeting.
If they meet the other requests as far as the site plan approval process, so seeing an updated plan with these various changes that would also still meet the code requirements, is that something that you would want to revisit at your January 5th meeting?
Well, do we have an estimate based on 10-9-6? How many islands would be required for this space? Have you done those calculations?
So they're required for every five spaces. So you have, um, once you hit that golden number of 20, the, that requirement kicks in. So with a presentation of 27 spaces, then that would require a minimum of five islands. And so that's, that's essentially the, the bottom line there. So as that number reduces, um, lower than 20, it's kind of like they're adding to also take away in this circumstance. So it's, the, the ultimate gain isn't a lot, but it's something. And so that's kind of where we're, where we're at. If there were 24 spaces required or put, shown on the lot, they'd need four, four parking islands, so.
So it's divided by five and we're on down?
Yes.
So they would need four. Because by adding four, they would remove, I mean, by removing four, they would get down under the 24.
Yeah. And once you hit, um, once you hit, you know, 24 spaces, I, I guess, or anything below that, then you'd have four that would be required or, or less. 21 spaces would be still four.
I, I see on the site plan, some landscaping areas already designated. Are those, uh, proposed landscaping areas? Or are those subject to change? Or, I mean, why, um, who put those on there? And would those be sufficient?
Though, those aren't considered parking lot islands. So those need to be approximately the dimensions of a parking space, so 144 square feet. So anything outside of the lot shown as a landscaping island or a buffer between the lot and, and elsewhere is just a, it's a design choice and a, and a buffer that staff recommends.
Okay.
And as a commission, are we inclined to recommend that they provide as many as are required by code?
I would say yes.
Okay.
As much as is possible unless they want to come back for variance. That's how we work.
There's going to be a variation process anyway because of the eight-foot width.
Mr. Meltzer, what is your, um, take on the width of spaces?
The width? I was under the impression, since it was a private lot, that the nine-foot width didn't apply. Maybe I, I just read it wrong. And then, you know, as you mentioned, in terms of the timing, we had, um, we're, we're a contract purchaser, obviously, so we have limited time. My hope was that in scaling back the proposal, we could, you know, hopefully get approval. The, the property is significantly underparked. There is, you know, the, obviously, there's, there's parking available from time to time at the village lot. Although, you know, if it's a resident walking home late at night, you know, it, it's not ideal for everyone. It'd be better to have more onsite or close to site. Ashley and I had talked about some other possible options in the area. But, uh, yeah, the goal was, you know, to at least get a little bit more, you know, not go crazy with the, the plan. So if, if there's any path to do that, that would be, that'd be great. I, I'm not sure we'll make it to the, you know, January meeting, just given the timeframes that were allotted in the contract.
When is your contract closing date?
It's before the end of the year.
So even the special meeting, isn't it?
We can't notice in time?
Yeah.
Well, for variations, but. So you're saying you can't, you won't be able to provide us with an updated site plan until after our January 26th meeting? Is that what you said? Or did I misunderstand?
I'm saying I, I might not be the contract purchaser, you know, at that point, given the timeframes allowed in the contract.
But somebody from Riverside Lawton LLC can get this to us?
Well, um, in January, no. Because, or I, I guess I would say maybe. It's not really our decision, if that makes sense. Because there's a, you know, transaction contract and seller would have to agree to extend that in order for us to be able to do that.
So you have a land purchase letter of intent or contract that expires at the end of the year?
That's right.
So there's no guarantee that you will continue to be the purchaser?
That's correct, yes.
It would be up to the seller of the land?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But is it contingent on receiving this approval? Or are you comfortable hearing, having heard this discussion, knowing that the commission is certainly open to your plan if it's revised, moving forward with your sale?
We, we are, um, you know, as Ashley, I'm sure, could attest, very concerned about the parking. Even this isn't quite, you know, enough. You know, I think they're, by your guidelines, it should be in the 40s. So, you know, moving from 16 to 22 is, is, is a step in the right direction. And so I, um, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't know. I, I would, I guess I would have to, you know, think about it. But it, it likely would be a, you know, a deal breaker for us.
If we didn't approve any additional parking or depending on how much we recommended approving or did approve?
If, if we, if we, you know, were required to either, you know, go forward or not at this moment without any guarantees of any additional parking, if that makes sense.
Well, what I'm hearing from the commissioners, and please tell me if I'm not representing our position, is we are favorable, I think, to allowing additional parking. It's just that we want to see the final product, given what our discussion tonight and the, the parking islands and whatnot. So I, I misrepresent?
That, that's where I was going, certainly. And that's why I was suggesting some parameters to work within. And I think those parameters do work with your future plan to get 22 spaces. So at this point, it's more of how are you going to present that to us? And, you know, are you going to make a good faith effort to provi, do your parking plus reasonable landscaping? And, um, just in terms of listening to what we're saying. So in general, we're favorable, but without those details, it makes it hard to give a final stamp of approval. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
And did I overspeak the chairman?
Not for me. Is there a value to going through the standards tonight or waiting until it comes back to us?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I, I think you would probably want to wait for your final plan.
So I don't think discussion of the standards right now will change any of our recommendations or wishes. Okay. So staff can summarize our discussion and our wants and communicate that to you?
Okay.
And, and I, I think, you, you know, I, I heard the commission saying you, and correct me if I'm wrong, that everyone was generally open to the eight-foot should you apply for a variation, which would help you, you know, keep as much potential parking as possible, obviously. So that's something to discuss with staff, too.
It, it gives an advantage both to the number of parking spaces plus it allows for perhaps space trading for landscaped islands. So I think it is a benefit both ways. You get the number of spaces you want, but there's also room to put in those, that landscaping. Sorry, landscaping, when I say that, I mean the islands.
So 10-9-6 also talks about the species. So there should be shade tree species, ornamental tree, shovary, et cetera. Do we want to see a plant list when it comes back? Or are we comfortable with staff working with the new owners to do this?
I would say I'm comfortable with staff working with and with the owner, new owner and the plant list that the village already has in terms of approved trees.
Okay. Any dissent on that one? All right. Thank you, Mr. Meltzer. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
So, uh, are we continuing this matter to the 5th, to the January meeting?
It's, um, it seems like it's up to the petitioner. If he has variations, it would have to be the January regular meeting. But if it's just site plan approval and meets all of the zoning requirements.
Right. And, and because it's not a published notice or mailed notice, we don't need to pick the specific date. But you should confer with staff and make a determination whether you're coming back on the 5th or the, or the regular January meeting. And it would be the la, the later meeting in January if you're seeking a variation. Okay? All right, thank you.
To have the eight-foot wide.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a site plan review for 2710 South Harlem Avenue to consider site plan proposal for a commercial parking lot located. located in the B1C Commercial District. Yep. Applicant is 2720 Harlem LLC, Malad Noramati.
Would you like staff to do a summary?
Okay, so the petitioner is asking for a variation from Section 10-5-9, Table 4, which states that parking lots cannot be considered a principal use or be located in front of a building. So in this particular case, there is, it's, it's currently an empty lot. But the property to the south, so 2710 South Harlem, would be, that parking lot would be reconfigured to then also include this petition, which would then essentially convert this entire parking lot into, into a front parking lot, which would require the variation from that section. They, there is also a variation request from Section 10-9-5, which requires a parking lot landscape area that has to be at least 10 feet in width. On the site plan that was provided, the current landscaping area that fronts what is Harlem would be about six feet in width. And the petitioner is also seeking a variation from Section 10-8-4, which requires a two-way drive aisle of 24 feet. And the proposed plans are, show a driveway width of 23 feet.
N-20.
What's that?
N-20.
Oh, N-20 on the, in the existing southern, 2710 South Harlem portion of that parking lot. Let's see. What else am I missing? The location of the proposed parking lot has an alley to the west, so that limits how traffic can go in and out of this parking lot. So the, the entrance and exit of the, of this parking lot would be where it currently is, which is on the corner of Harlem and Long Common. And it would also include two additional spaces on the south. There are currently no spaces there. So it's, there are two entrances and exits currently to that parking lot. But with the addition of these two spaces, it would decrease that to one entrance and exit. And the, the parking lot would also provide additional parking to the, to this small commercial center. That's at 2710 South Harlem. So it would provide more spaces for them. And then it would also be used, a handful of spaces would also be used in conjunction with the property of the north, which is going to be the future dispensary. And so they would use a handful of spaces in conjunction with that, with that property. Let's see, what else am I missing? I think that's the brief overview of this, of this petition for the variation and for the special use.
I'll just make a couple of additional comments based on some discussion with engineers as well. So to clarify, two, two things that aren't quite clear on the plan is on that northern portion and the, the portion to the backside of the building that would front on the alley. There's, there was an initial interest in exiting outside of the lot through the alley. The plan was reconfigured based upon recommendations from the, the village's engineer team for improved traffic circulation. And so the 2710 is currently a vacant property lot. There's a fence that separates the, the alley from, from that lot. And likely, although there's not a barrier screening shown on the plan, that, based on the petitioner's, you know, discussion this evening, can indicate whether there's plan for screening that. And so there's not traffic going out the end of that, that part of the lot. On the northern part, also, that currently faces end in, you know, 90-degree parking from the property to the north. So there's not a plan to exit, you know, northway up through this lot. There are currently parking blocks, I believe, there or some type of curb end to the properties would, would be in place there. There's not a buffer requirement going from one property to another on that north side in a, in a B1 district. So the other comment from the engineers is just that there's not ADA spaces identified on the plan. So that would need to be revised to show a minimum of two spaces. The number of spaces on the plan exceed the, the kind of limit there for 26 to 50. Once you hit spaces beyond 26 spaces, you're required a minimum of two ADA spaces. And they could select where those are most appropriate. Normally, you know, commercial areas will have them closer to the building entries. But, but that's up to them to show where those should be located. The other thing on this property is that it also, based on size, is, is not, and, and the fact that it's a commercial entity is not subject. They need to consider the maintenance of stormwater management. But the size of this falls under the thresholds for MWRD as well. They also, on the plan, show removal of a curb cut onto Harlem Avenue that's currently there. And they would need to work with the, the state if they plan to remove it, whatever the state jurisdiction would require of them. It's not under village's purview to say what happens. Currently, it's blocked off with some heavy-duty trashcans as a village property. So that's, I believe, my, my comments on this particular site. And then they, they also, the engineers further recommended, and again, this is for the petitioner's decision and discretion, whether they want to continue to seek a variation for this. They would still need one. But on that far right lot, I guess, parallel, the drive aisle parallel to Harlem Avenue shows a 20-foot width. Our engineers took a look at the, the landscape buffer, and they could kind of do a trade-off. So they could remove a couple of feet of the landscape buffer, move the, the 90-degree parking in, in a couple of feet to gain some width in the drive aisle, which is preferable. So they could get maybe from 20 feet drive aisle to 22 feet by decreasing that landscape island just slightly. Or moving the parking blocks in, removing, you know, not having plantings right in that two feet from the, from the curb so that there's not any destruction of landscape and the cars can hang over that area. So those are the only two suggestions from our, our engineers. We likely will have written statement from them saying the same at the January 5th meeting if we don't see a revised plan that indicates those things. That concludes my, anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, very good. Questions for staff?
Could you repeat that? You said two recommendations from the engineers. And it sounded like one was they didn't like the 20-foot aisle.
Correct.
They prefer 22. And the other is to maintain a barrier between the northwest end of the parking lot and the alley. I'm a little confused on the, the parking lot and the alley relationship.
Yes, so the, the two, the two recommendations from the engineers was the inclusion of ADA spaces that are required.
Yes.
And then the other was increasing the drive aisle that's parallel to Harlem from 20 feet to maybe 22 feet. So pending their, their interest in doing so. The other thing, as far as on the, the other side, kind of where it fronts the alley, it's just a staff note that there's not any type of fencing or barrier identified there. There, that's part of what they're seeking, a waiver from the code for a variance in, in a buffer. And there's no screening shown. At minimum, we would like to see some type of fencing if there's not the width of a, of a buffer between this area and the residential zoning district.
Thank you for the clarification. I am now corrected and I understand.
Other questions? Somewhat lazy questions. So they are proposing to have traffic from this parking lot exit into the alley? That's what they're proposing?
No.
No, they are not proposing to have anything?
Correct. That's, that's, it would be two-way traffic on that kind of portion of parking that's north of the shopping center building.
And these are two parallel spaces immediately north of the building?
That's what's shown.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the engineers did, asked about that, and they did not feel that that would pose a, a challenge based on the, the length of those spaces and the circulation that could be, could take place in the lot.
So you also indicated that it appears to be a drive aisle that goes into the next property. Is that anticipated to happen? Or the property?
The, the, I believe what happened is that the petitioner's design, you know, just doesn't identify the property to the north, what's on that, that particular property. They can clarify, but my understanding is that the two lots are not going to connect. So, so although it looks like a drive aisle would be north, that space to the east of the parking island, kind of that, that side island, I think is in place so that it allows the additional parking to the very north of this, of this parcel on, on the right-hand side, kind of facing Harlem.
It seems like you might get more parking if you just continued, rather than making that a drive aisle leading into the next property, if you reoriented the parking. Just, if it's not going to be a drive aisle, it might be something to consider. There's a requirement for a variation for the landscaping along Harlem because it needs to be 10 feet and it's only six. And it's really zero as you go south of the drive, of the entrance off of Harlem. There is actually no landscape buffer there. They're paving right up to the park, the, the property line on Harlem, south of, of the drive. So it seems like with the loss of one parking space, we could provide landscaping in that location.
The southeastmost spot?
Southeastmost spot, thank you.
I think there would also be opportunity to do something rather than paving immediately south of that southeast spot. I'm going to call it vaguely triangular. But landscaping and a, a walkway in that very southeast corner would certainly help.
It would be nice to see all of the areas that are not being used for parking or driving to be landscaped. I'm very much in favor of removing that entrance off of Long Common because it's so close to that signalized intersection. So I think that's a, a very positive change. I am wondering, though, do they require a, a variation also along, along, Long Common? It is an existing condition. But there is no landscape buffer on Long Common. It's that, they're actually using the sidewalk as a drive aisle. And I, I know it's a, an existing condition, but it's one that's always concerned me. And what is the number of required spaces given the, the building?
There is no minimum because the building doesn't meet that square footage threshold to then kick in, yeah.
Is there a requirement for interior parking, for, for landscape islands as there was for the previous? Or does that not apply?
So in this case, it's looked at a little bit differently because currently this is, and we are requesting a variation in special use for 2710. You're, what you're seeing is a, essentially a combined site plan for the two to show how they work together. The, so initially, we were looking at this as 2710, which is that smaller portion of the site plan to the north, essentially working as its own parcel and property. It would still be required to have the special use and, and variation basically to, to have parking to the side of and front of a, of a building that just happens to be adjacent to the creation of that parking lot and acts as that parking lot. Michael, am I, am I communicating? I feel like I'm communicating this poorly as to why we, may or may not, if, if that is, in fact, with, with the commission's desire to look at these in, in like a dual capacity, whether that would then require us to add a variation for...
Right, so the original proposal had 2710 as more of a standalone lot with just a entrance coming in. And I, I think it was, there wasn't even necessarily...
They were separate, completely.
There wasn't, right, there wasn't cross-access from the, the existing strip mall. So, so, so that's kind of what we were looking at originally. And now that they're combined, it, it, it does change things a lot. I think we're going to have to kind of talk about it and figure out how, how it all fits together based on this new plan.
Will that also change the calculation for the stormwater management? Was the original calculation just based on...
The one lot, the 2710?
No, they, they looked at the, this in entirety.
So if we're only focusing on 2710, would we be unable to recommend to the board at the variation stage to put in landscape buffer on the southeast corner, since that's not 2710? I'm not sure either staff or Attorney Morris...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Right, so the...
We can require one on a different property.
Yeah. I, I mean, this is, like I said, this has been a fast-moving and evolving process. So I, I don't know that... We, we've done a, a full review of the new plan. So the, for instance, the five spaces that are shown on the, the south end of the building there, are those all existing? Okay. So only the closing of the curb cut is, is changing? And are you, is the proposal to, you know, kind of reconstruct the whole lot? Or just construct the new portions and leave the existing and restripe it, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, essentially...
Can I get your name, please?
Yes, Malad Noramati. Yeah, so basically, you know, originally, we just had the 2710 parcel that we were looking at. And then the village came back and said, no, we want to see something continuous with the other parking. And then we had an architect go through and look at the best way to maximize parking by combining kind of what we have and, and the 2710 parcel. And this is what he came up with. Actually, along, Long Common, there's currently six parking spaces. We'd be losing one of those parking spaces by adding those two additional parking spaces on the side. So if you're going to say, hey, I want you to put landscaping along one of them, and you end up with one, it's almost pointless for me to even change that because I already have six there, right? Because I'm losing one to gain two. So that's, that's kind of what's happening there. And then, you know, we looked at, well, how can we combine these things and, and also maximize parking? And that's why we moved away from just looking at 2710 as a standalone piece. Because originally, what we wanted to do was just have people come in through the curb cut that's there along Harlem and exit out into the alley. So then we went back and reconfigured it to, to what you see now.
And so now people will be exiting out that curb cut onto Harlem only?
So, now, we're basically taking everything and there's that one curb cut onto Harlem on the 27. So, this says 2710 Harlem, that building's actually 2720. 2710 is the, the empty parcel, the village-owned lot. So, that's, that's not correct, but, yeah, they would just be exiting out of the curb cut of the 2720 building. Also, it's eliminating the ability for people to come in from that side and then exit onto Long Common, right? Because now we're adding those two parking spaces, so, um, you know, there's that added benefit, but, or, I guess if you're cutting through, not a benefit to you, but.
So, what is going to happen at the alley entrance? Or what's the plan?
Uh, we're going to, so originally, we didn't propose anything. The village came back and said, "It'd be nice if you put a fence up there." So, we agreed to do a six-foot fence along the 2710 section going into the alley.
Okay. Other questions for Dr. Normati?
No. I'd say that the fence along the alley at 2710 is something that I think the residents would appreciate because there's been some commentary over time regarding the use of the whole corner and concern about people using the alley and ending up on Berkeley. So, that, that suggestion by the village and the apparent acceptance would definitely be a benefit to the local residents.
Yeah, and then also, I think you guys also mentioned reducing the landscaped area along Harlem there to increase the, the width. Uh, it's currently at 20 feet in the drive aisle. That would be fine too. Well, I mean, we're going to be utilizing some of that space for signage. I know the village is interested in also potentially putting kind of an entrance to Riverside signage there, so, you know, if we shrunk that down, I think maybe four feet would still give us plenty of space to, to put some decent signage. Um, and then we gain two feet in that, in the drive aisle, something like that would be fine.
I think the engineers also gave another option of kind of moving the blocks?
Yes.
So, that it would be a, basically it'd be a 16-foot space with a curb.
Yes.
For the, for the wheels. Um, I think that would be far preferable than decreasing the amount of landscaping. I mean, basically, you're in, you're, effectively, you have the same-sized space because the wheels are stopping at the blocks. And the blocks are, can, can be problematic. They're unattractive. They do move. So, I think a curb is a much better solution. I would be in favor of that.
And also, I think you guys mentioned the connection between the 2704 parcel and that, that's not shown over there. That area to the north of that is actually a landscaped area on their property. There won't be any connection into that space, so, um, there's no concern of cars cutting through to that other property.
There's a photograph exhibits in your, in the packet that, that shows that landscaped area. I'm sorry to recall that. Thank you.
But people could still walk from 2710 to 2704?
You can, and that's the intent.
Right.
Yeah.
And, um, in response to the lighting question, your answer was no, so you're not proposing to add any additional lighting?
We are. There's one LED light pole in that island, kind of in the center of the 2710 parcel.
And will that also be shielded so the light only comes down?
Yeah, so that would just illuminate that 2710 section because we already have lighting for the 2720 area.
Is there any on the north wall of the building?
No.
Exterior? And thank you for printing these out. We can actually read them now. So, I see, it says permeable asphalt paving.
Yes. I think that's just normal asphalt, to my understanding. I don't know. Is that anything different?
Well, there, there are different ways and maybe you can offer some clarification as to whether it'll be standard asphalt. There are types of permeable asphalt which allow greater, you know, water infiltration. And then there are other permeable surfaces, like, you know, pavers and bricks and, and all of that. So, um, when such, you know, surfaces like a permeable, like true permeable asphalt are installed, then there are, there's certain depth and materials that go in the underlayment before you put in the, the asphalt. And so, it wasn't clear if that.
Yeah.
If that's the intent or it's standard or paving or what?
No, I think it would be standard. I mean, once the site gets, the, the plan gets approved, it would get sent over to engineering to figure out the grading and all that and, um, but no, it would just be the same material that's at the 2720 because obviously, we're trying to make it all continuous.
So, there isn't intent to repave any part? It's just you're going to be adding?
Not, right, so we'll, we'll repave the 2710 parcel.
Okay.
Nothing in the 2720, just re-stripe some of these areas.
So, it won't be permeable asphalt? It'll just be regular asphalt?
Regular asphalt.
So, you should change the plan up?
Yes. So, scratch the perme.
I noticed that too, the permeability, but, okay. Has there, has anyone had any concern about the, having just one ingress and egress driveway so close to the intersection? And not moving that? I mean, maybe that requires I.D.A. approval if you had to move that driveway.
Yeah, we're, we're not trying to like mess with the curb cuts that are already there or go down that path, so, um, just kind of working with what we have.
But if you could retain the curb cut and said it's at 2710 already and close off? I do, I'm not a traffic engineer at all. I just, you know, I drove, drive by there when it's busy and you probably know far, far better than I do how congested it is right there.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we want to combine the spaces, this is kind of, I guess, the best way to do it. Otherwise, you're not, you're not going to maximize use having two entrances. If we did look at 2710 as its own parcel then, and didn't combine it with the other 2720 property, then you could say, "All right, well, we could add the three parking spots along the side of the building on the north end and then just run all of the parking that's on the north end all the way down and just leave the curb cut where it is and then just have ingress, you know, from Harlem and then exit out into the alley." Or, I mean, you could put a fence still and have people go in and out that way too, but, but now we would be, I think when we originally showed it that way, you would get maybe 18 spaces. So, this, this plan does maximize the number of parking spaces we get.
All, all I was asking about is whether instead of having the driveway that's shown here, you did, you closed off that and you had a separate driveway where the 2710 driveway is now. I don't know if that would impact the number of spaces. I was just.
Oh.
Asking. I guess the village engineers, hired engineers have not expressed any concern.
I think it would because now you're reducing that drive aisle because the building curves in at the end there. So, there's no way we'd be able to get parking all the way down to compensate for the space that we're losing on the north end.
Okay. And then to be clear, there is currently now no intent to use the alley for any kind of ingress or egress.
Under this plan, no.
From this property?
No, we, we'd be putting a fence up, so.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Mahal, when you were talking about a fence, what, where were you proposing, where were you talking about a fence?
That's where they suggest, which is along the, basically.
Because you said something about how people use the alley and end up on Berkeley, but there is a fence there now.
We've heard in public comment that people are concerned about the use of the alley to go onto Berkeley.
That it could happen in the future, not that it has happened.
Right. Well, it, it's hard to tell. There have been complaints a number of ways.
Yeah, maybe that's not where you can now.
There was a desire at one point for a cul-de-sac over there.
Yes, I remember that, yes.
So, I, what I was saying was, the owner's willingness to put in the fence and the villages suggesting to put in the fence certainly would help to mitigate some neighbor concerns.
Okay, okay.
Over drive-through traffic.
And that's a public alley, not a private alley, is that correct?
Correct. So, it's, it's the alley that backs to the business district there and Commissioner Mahal's comments about a concern about circuitous traffic in that area or using it as a cut-thru off of Harlem is a concern. And we're looking at, you know, options for how to mitigate that with a change to the uses and property and all of that in this area. So, um, it's true that, you know, the initial proposal from, uh, Dr. Normati was to just come straight in 2710, exit right out the alley with no directional guidance necessarily once you hit that alley. And then our thought was, based on the fact that he's the property owner of the, the lot to the south, it was a good opportunity to look at maximizing parking in a way that would configure lots together. So, um, he did so and, and this is what the result is, which predominantly meets a lot of the intent of, of what we're looking for.
I had a further question for, for you, sir. It was wondering if you had considered anything regarding some bike, bike racks or bike stanchions or, or something like that in any of these spots on the plan?
Um, no, I mean, we don't really have people bike to the, to any of those businesses generally. Um, I haven't seen anyone tie up a bike anywhere.
No one, okay, all right.
Around there. Um, I mean, I, you know, if, that is a concern, instead of doing, you know, in that triangular area that you had mentioned, that is a possibility to add some, some bike racks there. I think that would be a nice addition for.
And where has the village mentioned putting in a sign? Have you had any specific discussion?
It would have to go in that landscaped area along Harlem, the six-foot landscaped area that we've got now, so.
There, there's currently a sign for the shopping center that they'll need to relocate into this part of the, you know, their, their property.
Okay. So, there won't be anything to the east of the LED light fixture pole on the north end?
No, this is all, that's all parking.
Well, there's parking right along the landscaping, but between that light pole island and that east spot, is there anything to prevent anybody? Will there be anything to prevent anybody from going north?
Well, that north area is the landscaped area of, of the 2704 property, so, you know. I mean.
I see sumac trees or something, but there's not a lot of landscaping.
Yeah, there's not, I mean, there's nothing, you know, that you can probably see there, but that area is designated for landscaped areas. It's paved up, it's curved up around there and, um, we can.
And 2704 does have parking blocks, if you favor it?
Yep.
Other questions?
I do think on that northeast corner, you might want to take a look at the parking configuration just because that furthest northeast parked car will have no choice but to like back up.
It would have to back on.
Into the drive aisle. Whereas if you, instead of having the two northeast spaces kind of facing to the east, if you face them to the north and have a, a square landscaped area there, then, um, it, it makes the maneuvering a little better.
I'd be open to changing that.
It would just be two for two, so.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I think, I mean, aesthetically, it might look better too because you got.
And if there's larger landscape area there, that might be a better location for a sign.
For a sign, yeah.
I agree. That would be good. I can definitely make that change.
Other thoughts, questions?
I have a question for staff, I guess. I'm a little confused. I was looking through the paperwork. I can't really see it, although I think I read this. We're concerned about there being a lack of a buffer yard that abuts the alley there between the new parking area and the alley, is that right?
Yeah, so conventionally, um, I don't know if you can read that?
Um, it's typically the buffer between residential district and a business district would be five feet, I believe. Is it 10?
10.
Oh, 10 feet. Um, and it would also require that fence. So, when they originally proposed going out through that alley, that's when they would require, or that's when they were asking for the variance to not have a buffer, or sorry, a fence there in that, in that buffer area. But now, as they're not asking for that variation, then it would just be that fence that would go on that eastern side.
It, we still would, would want, you know, ideally, you would have some type of landscape buffer plus the screening, but because they're, regardless of whether they're exiting out that alley or not, they still have the alley kind of that acts as a buffer, but also then you have, um, just that property line would end up being a fence screening rather than a, a 10-foot landscaped buffer. So, we would be reducing that landscape buffer essentially to zero plus whatever space they needed with the fence.
But we, we'd be granting a variance for that?
Correct.
And this is from 1097 buffer yards? Is that what we're looking at? 1097A and 12, et cetera? I'm, I was just trying to find it in the code, exactly where this requirement is. This is, 1097 is where I think you might be discussing. Or is it 1085A2A?
It's five feet. My, my apologies, Francisco was correct. It is a five-foot buffer yard in B1. Good job.
So, it is 1097?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, my other question was, I'm confused. Maybe this is a question for Mr. Mars. A says for B1 district, where an interior side lot line and/or rear lot line in the B1 district abuts a residential district for a single or two-family residential use. But here, it's abutting an alley. So, is that still considered abutting a residential district? It's not up against a lot line, a, you know, private lot line. So, I'm just wondering if we do need to grant a variance for that?
Um, that's an interesting question and I think some of that would go to kind of what the traditional staff interpretation of that section has been. Um, I, I guess I thought of it as abutting the residential just because this, you know, this lot is only separated from the residential by the alley, but, um, it's something we could look at previous cases to determine.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, the ma, what makes me think of it also is I drove down that alley and it's not like it's.
It's not right up against it.
It's not right up against it. It's someone's drive, garage, I think.
Yeah.
It's not used by a lot of people. It's, you know, so it's really minimal impact on, especially if there's a fence there. I don't know if having a five-foot greenery is going to be beneficial as opposed to providing more parking.
Right, but that goes more to granting the variation as opposed to whether it's.
That's true, right, right. I'm just saying it would be gloss to me on how we read that, but I suppose there should be some kind of hard line. Does a public street or an alley qualify as part of a district of any kind or is it just some, something else?
Right, and true, so often codes will specify and I can't remember with Riverside's, but the zoning districts extend out to the middle of the rights of way. So, if you think of it that way, the business district is going in the middle of the alley and the residential is starting.
Okay. And then I had another sort of related question regarding the provision about parking always being to the rear of a building in the B1 district? And where is, where is that coming from exactly? Because again, I had trouble finding it. Is it 105 to 5?
Might be a foot not to the table.
Yeah, so this would be from, you know, 1085?
1085.
10852 or A2 is the B1 district. So it may be located to the rear or the side of the building. It would be allowed in the front of a building in the B1C district by special use only. And then it also further says it would be permitted to encroach into the rear yard. However, all applicable buffer yard requirements shall be met. No parking is permitted in the buffer yard.
Okay.
And so in this case, if there was to be determined any applicable buffer along that portion of the property, then they couldn't have parking spaces there.
Because when you see the lot, you draw the line along the edge of the building, and even though there is, it's a separate lot, 2010 is its own lot, if we consider it.
Correct.
As part of a larger lot.
Yeah, because so, yes. So rather than subdividing, we're kind of considering them as their own lot, but the configuration of those lots make it appear as if they're one lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So we will continue this discussion on the fifth.
I just wanted to make sure I understand exactly where everybody's at. So we're okay with the site plan, so long as we move, like, those two parking spaces on the northeast end to the, I guess, the row on the north end, and then add that space and create a green space there that would be wider, so that we could put signage in there and a little more landscaping, move the lighting there as well, and then shrink down the green space along the rest of Harlem by two feet to gain two additional feet in that drive aisle, and then adding a bike rack in that triangular space.
I think the suggestion was to move the park, the end of the parking along Harlem by two feet. So you would have sixteen-foot, it would be a sixteen-foot parking space with a curb instead of the parking blocks that would allow for a two-foot overhang.
Right, so it would be either the, the parking blocks would still be allowed, but they could move those, the two feet, basically to the edge of the pavement.
Okay, sure.
Or install a curb. So it would just be to allow for parking up to the edge of that pavement with the overhang allowance.
Got it.
They just couldn't, like, you wouldn't landscape bushes right up to the, right up to the.
So you're saying instead of a curb up along there, just move the parking stops up and use that kind of as the barrier between the landscaped area so that the cars can move up and have the additional two feet?
It would be an option, yeah. It would be determined whether.
I mean, I think whatever makes it easier for cars to get in and out, why not?
They need to also show ADA accommodations spaces.
Right, so, I mean, we already have the one spot. It's not shown in this site plan, but we're just designating one additional spot. So it's just two, right? That's all.
Two. And the current curb cut to 2710, you know, we heard that IDOT would have to be.
Yeah, that we just leave. I mean, obviously, we're going to have this landscape buffer and, actually, along, yeah, we'd have this landscape buffer, but yeah, we still have that curb cut off of Harlem.
I think it would be preferred to remove the curb.
It would be preferred by me, too, but that's a long.
I mean, I don't think IDOT is going to give you any trouble. It's hard to, removing an access point is not generally a problem.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that that's not going to be a condition required for this. Obviously, you know, I'll look into it and see if we can do that, but if that's going to hold this up, then that's going to be problematic.
I wouldn't say that the, I don't know what the condition would be to have permissions, that that process does take a very long time to get assessment from IDOT about that. So, you know, if the intent was to, you know, there's really no access point or intended access point, you know, the idea would be there to remove that at some point, but to insert that as a condition of approval would be a very long time from now, likely.
Does anybody want to make it a condition?
I think several of us are in favor of getting rid of it, you know, essentially abandoning an access point. And we'd probably rather see grass and not the big, heavy garbage cans.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than making it an explicit condition, I'd make it a.
Wish list.
Good faith, a good faith effort to pursue communications with IDOT to remove the driveway. Something that, you know, that's our goal, and we expect you to pursue the goal.
Okay. There's nothing else? Please.
For the next meeting, I'd really like to see an explanation of how the northwest parking space, along with the two parallel spaces adjacent to the building, will function. Because I see the same issues there as the one that Commissioner Peltier mentioned at the northeast corner, where you're going to have vehicles needing to back straight out, or in the case of the parallel straight spaces, go in reverse until they hit the drive aisle.
You're talking about the parking along the building on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are actually, so they're 25 feet wide. You know, in a normal situation, these parking spaces are only 18 feet deep. So you've got plenty of space to back up even within that parking space. So you're talking about, you know, an additional seven feet to be able to back out and just pull out. So I don't think it's very problematic to, as far as ease of access, because they're so wide. They're 25 feet versus, like, the standard 18 feet.
Anything else we would like to see? I'll note that the application for the site plan review says that it's in B2. It's not, it's in B1C. So when we go through the standards on the fifth, there are some that we don't, we don't need to address, the B2 ones.
I'd love to see landscaping extended south on Harlem Edge.
Yeah, so that, it wouldn't make sense anymore, because I could just leave the six spots that we have, because I would only be gaining the one. It's like, what's the point of moving all of that around to?
Because then you have a better site plan with more landscaping and.
Well, then it would actually allow for people, it would ease traffic flow, because now I could have people actually exit out onto Long Common versus just the one.
It's just a request, but I think you should consider that.
So if this strip is going to be four feet wide, could you move those two southern ones over a bit so that you can put four feet between the sidewalk and that southeastmost lot? Does that make sense?
You're saying shorten the parking spaces?
Just move them over. So where you have the triangle stripes for, you know, no parking, can that be shortened by, then narrowed by two feet? Move those two spaces over a bit and then provide some landscaping to the east of them?
I can have the architect take a look and see if that's, that makes sense as far as the spacing of the whole area. Yeah, I'm not opposed to the landscaping. I just want to make sure we're maximizing the parking space, so I've got no problem with adding, maybe, you know, beautify the area. I'm okay with it.
Am I right that we're going to have to grant a variance for not having that landscaping along that section where Commissioner Peltier is talking about? Because it says you have to have it extend the entire width or length of a public street, I think, something like that?
And if we have to consider a variance for the parking in front of the building because we're combining them, it makes sense that we would have to consider that.
Right, so again, that goes to how we end up determining we're treating these as separate. So if we continue to maintain, as we were when he had the 2710 as a standalone, that the, he's reconfiguring and re-striping the stuff on the bottom, but it's existing non-conforming, or existing conditions, and in that case, non-conforming for the landscaping, I guess we need to look at, well, does the new plan trigger additional approvals needed? Or are we still treating them as standalone? So that's something we'll discuss internally. And that will determine, I guess, whether he would need a variation down there or whether it would just be an existing non, continue to be an existing non-conforming, and you could request it, but he may not do it.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Kind of?
But you'll let me know about that before the next meeting, right?
Yep. Yeah, we'll talk about all this tomorrow.
And one last thing, I guess, I was a little unclear. Is your intent to ask IDOT about eliminating that curb cut? So it looks like your plan, parking lot plan, that is being shown?
Yeah, that would be ideal. I just want to make sure it's not a condition.
Okay. Well, it's just that that's what the plan shows, so I'm just.
Right, right, right. Yeah, that's how you drew it, yeah.
To be clear, we're not making it a condition, just a very big request.
Got it.
With the understanding that the bureaucracy can make that challenging.
Yeah.
Like all good things. Anything else? All right, thank you. We'll see you on January 5th at 7:30. Okay, going back to our agenda, under 7, old business, the 2022 work plan adoption. Potential adoption. Those who, of you who are electronic, it's page eight. Are we satisfied with the change in language for the zoning update? Any further edits requested? Commissioner Miller, is, you were concerned that it wasn't clear enough as to who was making the recommendations? Are you satisfied with what's there now?
Yeah, I mean, there was something I noted in here, but. Okay, it's, no, I don't really have any. I think it's fine now. I guess this is, the second sentence is true. RTA and its consultants will be providing these recommendations, and there's a typo there, I guess, they will be tailored to the needs of the Village of Riverside. They will be providing, I mean, we're having input into them, but they will officially be presented by the RTA to the Village Board. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, they were, the preliminary recommendations were provided in overview to the Village Board, and staff is preparing to assemble a memo for planning and zoning commissioners as you walk through the various recommendations to help you in that work.
But after we review, discuss, and make recommendations in the first sentence, then RTA and its consultants will be providing these recommendations? That's happening after we review, discuss? Do you see what I'm getting at? Because it's the second sentence.
I see what you're saying.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
Okay, so perhaps when this plan was, when the draft work plan was, you know, created, I think at that time, it had made more sense, because if we were adopting this, or if you were adopting this in November, that was prior to the, to the presentation. And so if there's an alteration we need to make to the wording, we certainly can do that if, to your liking.
Okay.
Yeah, we can change the verb tense on the second sentence.
The recommendations have been made. Or these recommendations have been provided.
Any other changes? What about for the impervious surface calculations?
I thought that was a question.
I agree.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this work plan?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Peltier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
With Commissioner Matthews being absent.
Okay, so that motion carries. This will hopefully be in the Village Board's agenda on the 6th, and I'll be there to present it on the commission's behalf. It will be reviving. Thank you for your work on that. Next is information, so related to the zoning update, the Steering Committee is meeting on the 29th as a final, perhaps final discussion before passing the text amendment recommendations or suggestions to PCC. It's a very, they are very long memos, so just be prepared for some homework at some point so that we can get ready to discuss them. So we have our meeting on January 5th at 7:30. Thank you for being accommodating for that. And then our regular one in January is on the 26th. Francisco has the 2022 schedule of meetings. Have you shared it with everybody?
Yeah, I sent it.
You did, okay. Normally, our November, December meetings are third week of Monday because of holidays. There are five Wednesdays in November, so currently, it's that fifth Wednesday that's being proposed. But for December, at least unless it's changed, December 28th, which would be between Christmas and New Year's. I don't know if folks like to travel, relax, not work. Do we want to move that one up to the third Monday?
I have no issue with ending up the date.
Planning a year ahead, no.
I would prefer it as current schedule.
The 28th?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brahm?
I don't know what I'm doing. So I'm going to say I'm fine.
It's more than a year away.
I must say, I frequently travel in between those to visit family, so I may or may not be.
Okay, well, we can leave it as is. And please do put those dates in your calendars for each month. But if it turns out come November, we realize we're not going to have a quorum, we can hopefully change the date if we have enough advance notice. Anything else from, do we know we will have anything for January 26th?
There would be a variance for a fence on Kimbark, on the corner of Kimbark and Forest. The current, it's a corner lot. The homeowner is currently proposing a fence from the beginning of the house and then just essentially all the way around to the back. I believe six feet in the, kind of 40 feet after the house, whatever the setting requirement is, and then four feet in that kind of front section of Kimbark and Forest. So that will be on the agenda.
So we're definitely having the 26th, and maybe we'll continue talking about impervious surfaces.
Right, and the law and parking lot site plan may be back.
Hopefully. Thank you for that reminder. So I want to thank everybody. It's been another challenging year, but you guys were great. Really want to thank staff for working so hard and learning a lot once you got here and continuing to learn. And really want to thank Riverside TV for being with us, either in person or remote, everyone. So I hope everybody has a great holiday. Stay healthy. See you on the 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.